Diversity and inclusion is a big focus that we have this year. We're starting to produce weekly shows in English, Spanish, and Marshallese. Right now, we're calling it Springdale Stories because we're just moving quickly. You know, we're just trying to get content out and move quick. Later date, we'll work on some different programming. But Springdale Stories, and we've released three of them. I hope you guys have seen some of them. Damon Donnell did student services. Dr. Marcia Smith did reopening school logistics. Dr. Tara Harshaw did special education. Kevin Conkin did transportation. And I'll tell you, we added two people to our team who's helping us do some of this. Ms. Maribel Tapia, she does our Spanish programming, and she is awesome if you don't know her. And of course, we all know Anita Iban. She's amazing as well. So just having that presence in multiple languages simultaneously, it's very important. Consistent messaging. We want things to look consistent. Make it easy. Where is our stuff? Where is our messages? How do parents find stuff? There's so much happening right now that how do you find things easily and quickly? So we've created a district message from Dr. Cleveland's office. We did an interview with Dr. Gary Wheeler. We've done many messages from Dr. Cleveland. And as of right now, after we've only produced five of them, we have over 50,000 total views. So that shows you that people are hungry for information. We're also helping to take some of the information that comes out of education and make it palatable for our communication. A lot of our parents out in the community, they may or may not understand some of the words that we use. So we take it and we try to help make it a little easier to read at times. Consistent messaging through graphics. We've done pre-K and ASP essential workers, transportation, safety, choices, where because you care. And then one thing that I can't pass up, we all love doing this, it's so fun to brag on our young people, we have award-winning storytelling. So this is, I don't think, I may be wrong about this, so I hope I'm not telling tales outside of school. But I think With One Step, the Arcan Langenbelik, is the first produced film from a school system to be officially selected in the capacity at the Bentonville Film Festival. Now, I may be wrong about that, but I think it is. Thank you. And then, as you guys know, we have Mid-America Emmys. This year, our TV productions program's won eight out of 13 categories. So that was exciting.
Good job.
And then Coach Stellic, we'll talk a little bit about this later as well. Then there's the public relations side of things, where we're helping people to understand messaging through graphics like this. We did a professional photography campaign, and we're still doing it, called Shield Up. We're promoting our ups, and we're engaging our students. If you look real carefully at the moment, this woman, it looks like she had just gotten out of the pool. We actually squirted her with a water bottle. So isn't that kind of cool, right? Just little, you know, tips of the trade. So, yeah, it looks really cool. And so that's it. I believe that's the last slide. Yeah. And so just to help you kind of see, we're doing it in a multitude of platforms. Social media, in-person, graphic design, event production, video photography. And when it's all said and done, it's all consistent. It all reaches all of our community. And I give you this, I give you my word, that it'll be my charge to make sure that I'm honoring your vision and making sure that all of our 23,000 kids are coming back and staying with us, and that everybody in the state and the nation knows that we are the best school district, and we will continue to be because of Dr. Cleveland and your leadership. And it's, I'm very proud to have that honor to carry that message. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Ms. Cook, I'd like to introduce Ms. Tischer. She's right here up front. We have a real treat for you this evening. We've talked about the Student Forum in the past and the leadership of the students who have authentically and organically brought a Student Forum forward from the high schools. Ms. Tischer would like to introduce these young people that will talk to you about how they plan to open school.
Yes, good evening. This evening, we have three representatives from our Springdale Student Forum. The Student Forum is currently comprised of 12 members. There are three representatives from each of our four high schools. This evening, they're going to give you a summary of a discussion report that they submitted to our district, to Dr. Cleveland and our staff regarding their communication with each other virtually this summer, about their ideas for the reopening of schools. And then they're also happy to answer any of your questions. So at this time, I will welcome Jax Nally, Haley Greer, and Draco Tatiros. Thank you.
All right, hi. I think that we're just gonna go ahead and start off by introducing ourselves. My name is Jax Nally. I'm going to be a senior at Harbor High School.
My name is Haley Greer, and I'll be a junior at Harbor High School.
My name is Draco Tatiros, and I'll be a senior at SHS High School.
And so we're so thankful for, you know, the groundwork that we've had laid in Springdale to be able to have the Student Forum and have this sort of student voice in Arkansas. This is an organization that is completely unique. It doesn't exist in any capacity similar to this anywhere in Arkansas, or really anywhere in this region of the country. And so we're always really excited to show you the work that we're doing in innovating a student voice and the fact that that's coming straight here from Springdale. So we just want to go over an overview of what we've been doing this summer. And really, we've been tying in our work to our mission and our goals that we've had since our founding, which are diversity, representation, and voice. Giving students a voice and a platform to speak from so that they can have, you know, a say in what happens in the school district and also be partners with our administrators in that. And so if you turn, I believe, in your programming, you have a copy of this discussion report. And this is something that we wrote this summer. It was from our summer meetings that we had once a week. And we were really discussing, how can we have students involved in this coronavirus response and give them a voice that is something that they can use to partner with our administrators and make this an effective school reopening? And so from that, we thought, how do we empower students and utilize student leaders to make this effective and create networks of communication that are based on students and that use students as catalysts to reach their families and to keep our schools safe? And so I'd love for you guys to read that later if you have a moment. But that has spawned many really cool conversations that we've gotten to have and also led us to some really cool projects with Mr. Jones and the Communications Department, also with getting information out to families about the reopening of school. I think Haley would like to talk a little bit about that.
So when we first started all the pandemic help this summer, we first turned to the school board and Ms. Tischer talking about what we can do just at our schools. Again, like she said, we're just representations of the four high schools. So her first thought, after telling us everything that the school board had originally talked about, was seeing what questions we could get from other students our age and even younger about the reopening of school. So on our Instagram, we started a Q and A. And we had a lot of questions about anything that's school-related for this year. Basically, it went from lunch to mask breaks to what's gonna happen in the overall schedule this year. And after us being able to answer questions and even have to come back to Ms. Tischer and say, "We had this question, so maybe we could also do this for this year." And that got the attention of Mr. Trent Jones with the Communications Department. And he wanted us to start a Q and A kind of video and also getting a more lighthearted voice from our students and teachers within the school district. So as members of the Student Forum, we managed to get different videos of why students and teachers were excited to come back to school, what they missed, and the different options that they chose and why. So we decided that our best response with this would be a pass-the-note video, which a lot of our teachers did at different schools last year at the end of the year. So we started with just getting all of our siblings and teachers and anyone we could get in contact with to get involved with this. So as of now, Trent Jones is currently working on that video for us, so hopefully share with you guys within the next week or so.
And one of the things that we're really excited about that's coming up now is the expansion of the Student Forum and this vision that we've created in Springdale to lower levels. And so currently, we know that it's being looked into expanding that to the junior high level. And one of the things that we touched on in our discussion report is really how we can get more students involved and every student to have a voice and a relationship with their administrators. And so one of the really cool things that's come out of that is we've had some administrators reach out to us and ask how they can create organizations like this at their own schools. For example, at Central Junior High, we had Dr. Lofton reached out. He's put a committee in charge of giving students a voice, both with the reopening and also as a permanent scheme for student government in his school. And so that's something that we're really excited about. It's always great to see this kind of vision expand and students given more voice in how things are handled and students given more opportunities to be involved in these kinds of discussions. And so do you guys have any questions for any of the three of us?
It's exciting. I like that y'all are a part of it and that we need to hear from students and know how this, just how this is going to be a challenge to them. What's the biggest question or the most asked question that you've gotten?
I know personally, I've gotten a lot about how lunch is gonna work. Our response for Harbor, I'm sure, is more of a grab-and-go kind of lunch. That way, students can just get their lunch and then go to a different spot in the school. That way, they can still social distance with having to break, taking the mask off, and still enjoying seeing their friends. We also got a lot of transportation questions about how buses are gonna work and getting school early. So those were really the big questions.
Really, we got a lot of questions just about how, like how the logistics are going to look going into this next year. And that's a really broad, I'm sure you know, really broad question to answer, and I'm sure you've been getting plenty of questions yourselves. And so really, we tried to take specific questions that we got from certain people and broadcast the answers to those to try and dissect what the reopening is going to look like and give broad answers that we know are going to apply when we do go back to school.
Does anyone else have any questions? We really appreciate all the time and energy y'all are putting into this and just, I think the most exciting thing is that it's spreading, is to see that younger kids are looking up to you and seeing how that they can do it in their own schools. And so we just really appreciate it and thank you and can't wait to see what this year looks like.
Thank you guys so much.
Oh, yes, it's just Springdale Student Forum, spelled all the way out. Yeah, we love you.
One thing Jax told me in our Zoom meeting one day, he said, "You know, students know how to market to students. Pretty much you don't." You know? That's the way I internalized that. And he didn't mean it in a bad way. What he meant was, what he meant was...
He was right.
Yes. If you enact and engage student leaders, they will be able to bring forward marked change in a rapid way because of the ability to communicate. So I appreciate that, and I think that was a very mature, mature thing to not only say but to believe. So thank you, Jax. I've requested to remove D, so if it's okay, we'll move right on to E. Request approval for the SPS Ready for Learning Plan. As you know, Board, Dr. Smith and her team really went through the SPS Ready for Learning Plan, which also included the Student Support and District Support Plan. That happened last week. A requirement came out this week, said that the district not only had to review or the board had to review, but also be placed into the minutes. Ms. Deb Kaufman sent out that information yesterday. And so it just happened to work out really well that we have it for you to not only ask any questions you may want to review this evening, but you can also, if you like it as is, then we could just submit, post on our website, and send it into the Department of Education. My understanding is, we've already sent that plan into the Department of Education, did that early. When Ms. Melody Morgan was still here, we did our District Support Plan in June. So this is just a check-the-box motion and vote, if that's okay with you.
Does anyone, Board, do you have any questions concerning the learning plan? Is there a motion to formally approve the Springdale Public Schools Ready for Learning Plan 2020, 2021?
Motion to approve the plan for 2021.
There's a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Ramos, to approve the SPS Ready for Learning Plan 2020, 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much. It's really great that our Learning for Plan, our Learning Plan also includes our district curriculum, so thank you for that. And F, District Plan for Displaced or Remote Learning. Mr. Paul Miller, as you know, is our district IT coordinator and director, and he does an excellent job. He has a master's in cybersecurity, and always amazes me that he's able to do that. But he's coordinated and pulled together a plan for displaced and remote learning. What does that mean? I'd like for Mr. Miller to be able to discuss this plan with you and for you to ask any questions that you feel are pertinent.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, and Board, for the opportunity to talk about this. I'm gonna pull this a little closer so you can hear me. But so the first question is, what is our problem? And I think that kind of explains it pretty well. You know, we've been working for a long time about addressing the need for students to have the opportunity to use technology in the classroom. But as we discussed now, displaced students or the pandemic leading us down a path of having to be virtual or whatever that situation may be, the next path is how to deliver the connectivity to our students in situations where they may not have it. So first of all, students can't learn without being connected to the learning. So the problem that we face is that a lot of our students don't have a reliable connection within their own home for stable internet. And so we've been working a lot on how we can provide opportunities for them to stay connected. And so how do we stay connected is the first question, and there's lots of different opportunities for us to do that. We've got Wi-Fi in our own home, everybody's got a cellphone in their pocket. And if you want to get really nerdy, you can look up RFC 1149, which talks about transmission of internet connectivity over homing pigeons. So, you know, there's all kinds of different methods for connectivity. So what we've done is we've put a plan together, kind of a five-step process or plan for providing connectivity for our students. And so listed here are those five different bullets that we've kind of focused on. So one is we're providing a wireless access point on the exterior of every building, which provides in a 180-degree span, a 500-foot connectivity distance on the outside of the building, which gives students and parents an opportunity to be connected and still be safely distanced from one another in situations where we have blended or virtual learning environments where kids have to be connected and don't have that opportunity at home. So in addition to that, we've also partnered with a few different people in the community to provide some access. Some of these would be the Jones Center, the Teen Action Support Center. Also, the City of Springdale has partnered with us to provide our SSID on their network. So in the places that the City of Springdale provides free Wi-Fi, they're also publishing our internet for our kids. So we also have discussed in length with AT&amp;T and Cox about their options for income-based internet connectivity for individual families. And then finally, as we know with the announcement from the Department of Education and the state of Arkansas, we've been given some cellular hotspots and connectivity through T-Mobiles. So those are the five different avenues that we're focusing on for connectivity for our students. And so this is the process or how it's gonna work. So if a family needs internet connectivity, they would go to their school and talk about how to get connected. So the next step would be to determine the address of the family and figure out the proximity they live to one of our facilities. And so if it's a safe and reasonable option for them to be able to travel to one of our facilities, to be connected, then that's where we find a solution. But if that's not a free or safe option or reasonable for our kids to travel, then the next step is to investigate an income-based option in their home. And finally, if we've exhausted all those options, then we evaluate the possibility of providing a hotspot. Now, we put the hotspot last because we just don't have unlimited resources like we would want to. And so that's the limit of what we can provide. You know, if we had unlimited funds, we could provide one for every student and every family, but we just don't have that. So that's why it's listed in this order as the process. So once we have connectivity, we also have a ton of applications that we use for learning for our kids to make the learning engaging, to make the learning opportunistic for our kids and exciting for them to be able to do in a virtual environment. So there's a ton of options for that. Our curriculum and instruction team have worked exhaustive hours to be able to provide fantastic opportunities for our kids to be challenged and to be able to learn in this new and crazy environment we're now in. And so these are all tools that we have the opportunity to use, but our final tool and best tool is our teachers. And they're the ones that are passionate about bringing this to our kids. They work endless hours to stay connected to our kids and to provide those opportunities for them to be able to learn and grow in this pandemic environment. So with that, do you have any questions for me on that process that we've put in place?
Any? Looks good. Anybody have any questions?
Thanks for all your work.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. I, you know, I'm passionate about making sure that kids have opportunities to learn and grow, and if I can be a part of that through technology, that I'm excited about doing whatever I can to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The Plan for Displaced and Remote Learning, it's an internal document, it's not anything that we have to publish really or send to the state. It's just information that I think is very important for the Board to be able to know and understand as we move forward. The Essential Workers Program also is an internal document. The Essential Workers Program was born out of a need from the spring. In the spring, when we pivoted on March the 13th, it was very evident that the school district was a powerful source of need, and it met the needs of the community, meaning the parents, grandparents, businesses, families. And we weren't available. We were told that our buildings were closed and that we should all go home and try to do AMI. What we learned, what I specifically learned from many of our staff, is that although they were pleased to be at home, especially for just a little bit with the AMI process, it began to be a major burden at times, especially if the staff had young children. Or maybe even, not so young children, but just people at home, dogs, animals, life at home. They couldn't get away from the work. It was all the time, and it became, it became more of a grind, especially when they were trying to use their own equipment, their own Wi-Fi systems in order to have access to their children. So the thought process was, being a public school, who we are counted on across this state for many, many things. Education is one thing, not childcare, but a place for students to be, right? To learn, to grow, become good citizens, and to be business partners in the future. The school district also plays a role in the economy and in the work of our community. So the idea was born of what happens, because you have to plan, right? If you have no plan, that's a great opportunity for failure. What happens if our district has to move forward or gets to move forward into this pandemic? And for some reason, we have to pivot away as a district? What do we do? What do our teachers do? What do they do with their children? What are our essential workers going to be able to do with their children? How does our, how does our communities remain effective in the work that they have to do in a pandemic situation or a crisis situation? So the team and I got together, we brainstormed. It was quite exhaustive. Lots of time and energy went into it. And we were reached out to by Ms. Jennifer Tucker, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman's name who came with her.
James Coats.
I'm sorry?
James Coats.
Yes, yes, Mr. Coats. Thank you. They were very open to figuring out a way to make sure staff, children would be taken care of during that pivot away, where our workers, all of them, could still come to our school district, use our school facilities, use the Wi-Fi, use the equipment, be in a safe, clean environment, and to relieve some of that burden, that stress of having to do things from home. So the plan was born. I'd like to have Dr. Smith come to the podium, if she's available. Dr. Smith, I have to give her a ton of credit. She has extreme ability in follow-through. I have pretty good ideas. Follow-through is something, and details are something that Dr. Smith is really, really good at, especially with her background. So she and Mr. Hayes and I, along with Ms. Fink and Ms. Tischer, pulled together the idea of what it might be for our pre-Ks to remain open, because really DHS never shut down some pre-Ks across the state. We only shut ours down because they were school district-owned facilities. So how could we have our pre-K remain open and viable for families and children where education's provided, lunches provided, et cetera? And then how could we partner with the after-school program? So I'd like for Dr. Smith, if she doesn't mind, to briefly go through how the pre-K may work, and we have Ms. Brandy Wolfenberger in here as well, how the after-school program can work, and who pays, because that's important, and what opportunities exist today, and then go through our district full remote teaching and learning rubric in the back. Do you mind to do that quickly, Dr. Smith?
No. So one of the things we talked about is we had to look at the population of teachers we have. How many of them have students in our district? How many of them don't have students in our district and what that would look like? So the idea is that we would keep our pre-K programs open because they follow different sets of rules, if at all possible. And then to look at, how can the after-school program come in and work with us in our district? So the current idea would be that we would have our four middle schools that would be open. It would be run by the after-school program, and we would allow teachers and essential workers to use our facilities during this time. We know that when teachers come in and they work remotely from their classrooms, they want to make sure their kids are taken care of, so we would have set locations that would be easy for them to access. We also know, we don't know how many yet, because this is the first time we've brought it to you, so we are also going to have to poll our teachers to see how many of you would utilize these situations. In doing so, that we will have an overflow, so we've talked about getting our high schools certified as well, so we would have additional places for them. They would be using our cafeterias and our gyms. Those are the locations they would do. The idea would also be that during this time, students are still going to have to do their remote lessons. And so they have it so that students can have locations that they can work on their lessons in a quiet place. The other thing that's important to know is they have stricter requirements, and so they have to adhere to these things. So we would make sure that all those are enforced as they're moving forward. The other thing is, we have students that, parents that work in our district that have students that don't attend our district. So the after-school program also allows that opportunity for those students. So really, it's a great partner, partnership with us and the after-school program to make sure that we can provide opportunities for our teachers. So we know that, as you've seen, everybody talked, the last thing they talked about is teachers being the most important thing that our students have. And so we, Dr. Cleveland, I know, he said, "This is the most important thing we do, and we have to have teachers completely focused on the teaching and learning." And this was a way that we can really meet that need. Are there any questions?
No, it's a good idea. So far, we believe that this plan may be the only one that's existed. You may ask, "Well, how do we know we can do this?" Well, I've floated it to Secretary Key. He reviewed it for a couple of days and communicated back that it was very innovative, and he appreciated Springdale's innovation and their thought process of how the school district can remain a viable, open entity that the community can always count on. And that was our goal. You all have focused on this district being something that not only provides supports for the community, but is actually the heartbeat of the community. You know, I said today to the faculty, the entire faculty, that very often, it feels like, oh, I hate to say politicians, but government, and we're an arm of the government, occasionally step on us or lean on us to prop themselves up or step forward to something else. And that's okay, because we produce the best product any state can ever produce, and that is... And that is wonderful children that are ready to be adults, that are ready for the world of work, ready for the world of college and really ready for any possibility that they dream of. So that's okay. We, we want to continue to do that. We want to support our community. We want to support our parents. And at the very end, we want to support our teachers and our children at the highest level. I believe that's your expectation and we hope that we've met that expectation with this potential plan.
And Ms. Tucker and Ms. Uh, Ms. Wolfenberger, they've been amazing to work with when it comes to all the logistics and the requirements that have to be put in a, in a building. So very thankful for them as well.
Is it okay, board, if we move forward with this potential plan? Should anything else be necessary? Maybe you may?
Okay, it's for me.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. And again, it's internal. And I would assume that if for some reason the state says, or DHS says, hey, there is an additional need, we'd like some amendments to this, it's okay for us to go ahead and administratively do those things? Fantastic. Thank you so much for your support in that. Okay. Face coverings continue to be something that is interesting across the country. Do they work? Do they not work? What age do they work? What age do they not work? I visited with Ms. Brandy Wolfenberger. Ms. Brandy, if you would mind to come to the front? And we've done a lot of reading about what is required at the DHS level for pre-K. Last board meeting, great, healthy conversation about face coverings and what is necessary. We didn't have Ms. Wolfenberger here, uh, at the time to visit with about pre-K. You all were very intuitive and created a temporary policy to, to use pre-K through 12 face coverings. Ms. Brandy has some information that's come from DHS and a request for the board to consider in regard to face coverings for pre-K. Ms. Wolfenberger?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the board for letting me be here and Dr. Cleveland for inviting me. And also thank you for allowing pre-K to remain open, because if you don't know our funding, if our, if we close down, then the district loses our funding. So this provides a lot of our parents who need to work, um, a, a place to bring their children where they know they're safe. So thank you for that first and foremost. So DHS, we are governed through Arkansas Department of Education. We're governed through DHS. And we also have rules called ECHERS. So we have a lot of guidelines that we have to follow. And the recommendation for pre-K, actually children aged 10 and under is to not wear a face covering. Um, under two is forbidden. It is not allowed at all. So we've looked at a lot of programs, um, to see what other people are doing. And a lot of programs are wearing face shields. They're not wearing masks indoors. And they're allowing parents the right, if they want their children to wear a mask, then they will. And we've looked at the recommendations from the governor's office, which states that even children aged two and up will have difficulty consistently wearing a mask. Due to this, it is not practical for them to do so. We've visited with some pediatricians. Um, Ms. Rojo's has several younger children and her doctor encouraged them that if they didn't feel safe to take their children to a program, whether they're wearing masks or not, then they should not take them, that he would personally let his own children go to a program and he wouldn't, um, require them to wear masks. He also said that children are not going to keep those masks on. So the minute they take them off, another child picks it up, puts it on their face, that's a higher risk than if they didn't have a mask on at all. So our recommendation for pre-K is that we wear a face shield indoor. And I brought a very blurry picture. I don't know what we ordered. It's just a hat with a, it's called InstaGuard. So it's a, just a hat where they can actually write, the teacher can write the students' names on it. And that has a face shield that kind of comes around the side and goes down. That way they still have some protection. If they sneeze, um, if they're coughing, there is a little bit, bit of protection. But if they take it off, we can instantly clean it. It's a harder, durable plastic made in the United States. Um, and we just felt that was a, a better option to keep our kids safe. We know that our children, they, they share everything. Um, and just imagine putting, as close to this as to my mouth right now, another child putting someone else's on is very scary. And just keeping 20 masks on all day long. And that gives a little bit, another sense of, another layer, a little bit of sense of security. Parents are feeling better about it. And then on the playground, um, we are recommending that they not wear any face coverings. One, DHS said that they may not approve our, um, gators, because it's a choking hazard. If they got hung up on a big toy, then it could be a choking hazard. And then they need that, that fresh air on the playground that they're further apart. We're recommending that our teachers do, um, do some activities that will help keep them separated. We're, we're dividing up our playgrounds. It's only going to be one classroom at a time on the playgrounds. And it's going to be cleaned in between the next classroom. And then also our students have to be screened before they come in every day. So that's a temperature check and those questions asked every day. That's also part of DHS rules. So we're watching their temperatures a little bit closer. We're asking those questions every single day. So we think that to keep our kids safe and to get our families to bring their kids to school, we need to do face shields during classroom activities and then, um, mask free on the playground.
So are you proposing that we provide these and it will be required inside the building?
Yes. Yes. And we actually have, um, after our first day of school this year, we are getting money from DHS for the, any type of PPE devices, cleaning materials. So it's about 13, it was about $13,500 extra that we're going to get for cleaning materials and any extra devices or materials we need to keep our kids safe during the COVID pandemic.
Are these clip-ons, what, onto a hat or?
Yes. So the ones we, we originally were going to order, um, are on back order now all the way through, I believe, November, December. So these are our next vest thing. So it's a shield that you, it slides onto the hat. We're going to hot glue them on, so they won't come off. Um, and then that way, like I said, they, we can take them off, clean them. We can spray the inside of them if we need to. And they will be kept in the child's, um, heavy.
So they're going to take these off at any meal or snack?
Yes, meal, snack, rest time.
Rest time?
Outdoor time.
Outdoor time.
If they choose. If parents want them to wear them outside, they can, um...
But it's not a choice inside?
It's not a choice inside.
Is, what's, what is DHS recommending for inside? I mean, I'm sure they have some kind of recommendation.
Their recommendation is anyone 10 and under not wear a mask.
As most daycares now currently are doing, they're not wearing masks.
It's a mix. There, a lot of people are going to the face shields just because it's a, it's a little bit less scary for parents. Um, not necessarily kids, but for the parents. And then some programs are not wearing them at all. So I know, um, I think it's called God's Kingdom in West Fork. They were open during the whole entire pandemic. They wore the face shields and that's it. And they've not been closed down for any cases at all.
Yeah, my grandson went to Salem Lutheran and they have not worn masks.
Yeah.
So do you think that, are you thinking, based on conversations you've had with parents, that this is going to make pre-K enrollment potentially go up if we do something like this? Or do you think it's going to make parents feel more comfortable or?
I think both. I think it will make, help our enrollment go up, because a lot of our parents have called and dropped because of the, the actual mask. We originally told them we may be able to wear face shields and they were okay with that. And then whenever we said, no, it's been a directive that we will wear masks, um, they dropped their children. So I know we had 120 parents drop in a week.
Because they were going to have to wear?
Not all because of masks, but there was a big majority.
Because they were going to have to wear a mask?
Cause they're going to have to wear a mask. Um, and then we have the parents that want their children to wear a mask and have that. You have both sides.
Sure.
So the face shields are a nice middle ground to help parents that don't like the tight coverings on their face, um, feel comfortable and also the parents that want them wearing something to feel comfortable.
What if we did nothing and required no mask? And parents volunteered to have their kids wear masks if they choose and provide this as a voluntary option? What kind of response would you see? Would you, I know you don't?
It would have to be a guess, but I could guess that, um, I, I still think it would be a mixture. I think some parents would be excited that that was the recommendation. And then other parents would be concerned for the children's safety.
What about your teachers? What do you think they're most comfortable with?
It's also a split. Some teachers are very concerned about keeping the mask on. And then some teachers are concerned about their health. So this is also giving those teachers a little bit, you know, a little layer of protection. I don't have the answer, but I, I do know that we have people that are both, you know, very concerned about making sure masks are on. And we also have people that are very concerned about students that young wearing masks.
Our teacher, is DHS requiring teachers to wear a mask?
Yes, all staff are required to wear masks. Also all staff and all, anyone that enters our building have to be, um, temperature checked and asked the questions.
So teachers can't wear a shield?
No.
If they do, they have to wear a mask too?
Yes, unless they do a short, um, Haggerty lesson, a phonics lesson, then they're allowed to wear their shield for that short amount of time.
That was my only thought, was how in the world are they going to be able to do a, a reading lesson or a phonics lesson with their mouth covered?
Yes, a very short amount of time, they can wear a shield with that one. And they just have to make sure they position theirselves, you know, far enough away. But they're required all day to wear a mask.
Wear a mask, okay.
Because of the former vote, we would need to change, would we need to change anything in order for them to be able to do the shields?
Yes, ma'am, I believe you would. I believe the, the vote last time required all students. So I believe if the board was so inclined to, um, approve the recommendation, whether it be none or shields or, uh, all masks, then you could amend it just for the pre-K.
I mean, I, I kind of struggle with us having the board to make a decision, but we, we have to use what data we have and your recommendation. I'm just not a proponent of the, of the shield. I think it's, I think you're dealing with kids that are just too young to have, have that become a some on. So there's obviously a reason that, that Department of Health and the CDC has said 10 and under is not required. There's obviously a reason for that. So we made our decision K through 12 and actually pre-K through 12 based on the governor's recommendations. But I'm dancing around what I'm trying to say here. I think you're going to struggle mightily with, with this. But I know you, you want to provide an option and I certainly value that. I'm just giving you my opinion.
Right, yes, we want to, we want parents...
And also support when they're in board support.
Right, we want to, want parents to feel comfortable if that's what they want. If they want something, we want to provide something that they'll have. But also for the ones that aren't comfortable, that there's some options there.
The school that you mentioned that tried it before, how long were they running on? What kind of obstacles did they have to overcome with the kids to keep them on? Cause it feels like to me they would be excited about it for a few days, but then after that it does look cumbersome and potentially a problem.
Well, yes, it probably would. They've been wearing them since March. So actually probably April. It's just like anything. Um, if you've ever been in a pre-K classroom, they don't kind of just know how to line up. It's like herding cats. So it's a lot of, um, reminding, a lot of saying, oh, let's be safe. This is part of, this is how we keep our friends safe. And so it's just a lot of reminding, redirecting. And it's just like anything we do, washing our hands. Our students have to wash their hands before and after everything. And it just becomes natural to them. So I don't think it would be hard to keep the hats on. I think it'll be harder to keep the shield, the face mask on.
I, I think it'd be a good option, um, again, this is my opinion, is that you go forward with this. But I think we need to be flexible, that if you're 30 or 60 days into it and it's not working, that you need to have that ability to make that change. And I think you need to also have, if parents really want their kids to wear a mask or they want to wear this, that you, we need to provide it for them. And that, that, that's my opinion.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think we need to give our parents options, just like everything else, school choice, we're giving them options.
I don't want to be completely negative, but if you don't try it, then we, then we don't know. So I think you ought to be able to try it. And, but you also ought to have some flexibility on the backside to say, hey, we really gave this a great effort, but it's, it's really too problematic for us to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, you're, you, you've got to manage it and we don't, so.
Yes.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
So with that amount of time, have you seen the children become more used to something like that? Or did you have?
Um, I don't really know about face shields besides what I've seen in other programs. And I haven't been there, but I know a lot of parents that have been in grocery stores teaching their kids how to wear masks. Um, I've seen the face shields in the grocery stores of kids wearing it. So I know it's something they can do. It is a lot of management on the teachers. Um, it is a concern to me that, you know, that with the masks, they're cross-contaminating by sharing their cool Batman mask with their, you know, Power Ranger mask. And this way, if at least they have the hats, they're just a solid color hat and they're...
And they're all the same too.
Yes, and it has their name really big in it. So when we pick it up, we can put it on the right kid if they kick it off instead of... And it's not touching their mouth. That's, that's my biggest concern with the, the mask. It's touching their mouth and it will touch another child's mouth.
May I ask a clarification question, just so I understand?
True.
Did I understand somewhat from, I'm trying to read body language and eyes, because I can't see your faces, optional for parents that would like their children to wear the hat and the shield? Is that what I understood? Or all would wear the hat and the shield? And if it doesn't work, then she has the ability to relax?
I think what I was trying to say is that she has brought, you brought this forward as a proposal to, to fulfill our pre-K through 12 requirement that we voted on as a board, is this is the option for the mask.
Yes.
And then my suggestion was that at a certain time period, if it's not working well, then that becomes a voluntary option for the parents to get one of these. Or continue to use one of these. Or if they want to send them in a mask, then they're going to send them in a mask. But if it's a train wreck in 60 days, I think she needs to have the flexibility to say, hey, this is not working, let's revisit this. It's just my, that's my opinion.
Just trying to think about how that would be made.
I don't know how to get, does that make sense to you?
Can we not make the motion that we are giving pre-K the ability to choose either a shield or a mask as needed for the year?
That sounds as simple as you're talking about.
Review it 60 days.
Well, I mean, I don't think we need to review it. If she, I mean, they know what's going to work. And if they, I mean, as long as they're wearing one or the other, unless the governor changes or something else changes, but if we put it into policy or into a vote, that you can use either one as you see fit within your, I mean, that's how I...
Pending, pending meets DHS approvals or God wants?
Yeah, and I mean, and I would even say if, I mean, if DHS says they don't have to wear one and it's not working and you think it's okay for them not to wear one, then don't make them wear one.
That's maximum flexibility.
I mean, if the governor says 10 and under don't have to wear one and you don't, I mean, you know...
I'm not smart enough to go against what the governor or the CDC or whatever.
What Kevin is just saying is, let's try this. And if it doesn't work, then we're not going to make them wear a mask and the shields aren't working. And it's okay, and we're not breaking any laws by saying you don't have to wear a mask if you're in pre-K, then don't make them wear a mask.
Yeah, I'll repeat, this is, this is an option to fill our board's action of pre-K through 12. This is your option for a mask by parents who choose to wear a mask.
But they really wish that pre-K has one of the options.
They can pick.
But it can be an option.
An option.
And as Nick said, if it doesn't work, then it's, we're still, you're still meeting the DHS requirements.
Yes.
Ten and under. New territory.
It's just hard to know. We, we wanna do what will make the most people feel comfortable and what will make the most pre-K kids come to school. And nobody knows what that answer is.
Right.
And.
But I do think giving them options, even if parents are completely against it, if that's an option, but there's no mask, if it's not working out, and having some flexibility within that.
But I do think they'll try it.
Yes, absolutely. I think we should try it.
To fill our original intent and have face covering.
Looks for me.
We can do that.
They good?
So there needs to be a motion, someone needs to make a motion that says pre-K has the ability to choose what face covering they use. Is, will that cover it?
I believe so, with the ability for flexibility, with the option for flexibility, should it not be working, should it not work?
So, I'll give it a go. So I'll make a motion for pre-K to have the option of a shield or a face mask with the flexibility after a certain period of time to go to no face covering if.
That's a minute. Can we go back on the saying no? Can we go, I mean, can we? We can go back on what we said to say they can change it to no?
You're providing the, the ability for pre-K to be nimble.
Cause that's, that was a.
Pre-Carry.
I know, but that's.
Pre-K only.
It was only for pre-K only.
Okay.
If that's what you selected this one.
Let's make sure.
So make, make sure that Ms. Leanne and I have it correct, pre-K to have the option for a shield or a mask with flexibility.
To pivot.
There you go.
With flexibility to pivot to allow it as parents' choice.
There you go.
Based on DHS and CDC guidelines and all that good stuff.
The group motion.
That is a long motion, but I think that'll work.
Are you comfortable with that?
Um, based on parents' choice or the program's choice?
I'm not com-
Of pivoting.
Yes, you would have to, you would have to make the decision to leave it up to the parents. Right?
I'm not comfortable with the, even for their leaving that decision as a district being that if we're giving, that way we're giving some parents choices, but not all parents' choices. That is, I mean, we can still vote on it, but I mean, I, I don't.
Well, the only, the only thing that seems to make sense to me is that DHS really doesn't have authority over the K-12 environment, but they do the pre-K environment. And the pre-K environment is in our school buildings, so I think it gives you the ability to make those determinations since it's in your facility while you're still adhering to DHS requirements. Does that make sense? So, I think I understand what you're requesting and I'll, I'll repeat it to try to clean it up if that is, just in, and I'm cleaning my thinking up. My understanding is, the motion is for the pre-K to have the option for a shield or a mask at parent request uh, with the ability to have flexibility should it not work. Should there be difficulties to pivot to allow parent choice provided no DHS or CDC guidance is broken? Broken may be the correct word, or incorrect word.
Pre-K only.
For pre-K only.
Is this a standalone animal, so to speak?
What, what might be good is if we try this for a month or so and then come back and report to you on how it's working.
Bingo.
Say that again, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
What might be good is if we try this for a month or so, providing we're able to continue to have school and I believe we will for pre-K and she's able to come back to you and provide a report on how it's working. So it'll be okay?
It's good for me.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second.
Two seconds.
By Mr. Owenby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed?
That's first. Yeah, that's first and thirteen years.
Thank you, and I will be back and I will give you a report.
I just, I oppose.
Great.
That was a historic vote.
It's gonna put people in bad situations.
I'm confident that Ms., Ms. Brandy and her team of teachers will work really hard to, to help students, faculty and parents try to remain as comfortable as possible. Well, thank you. I know that was difficult, uh, but these times are interesting, so.
I have no problem with the face shields. I have a problem with opening that to parent, even.
Some choice.
I just believe with, with pre-Ks within schools and you're gonna see children in school that are not and we're asking the whole, the rest of the school to be in a mask, even first graders or kindergartners, we're going to run into problems.
That does make sense. Well, the, the good thing is it is a temporary policy, so you can always adjust if necessary.
Thank you for all the, what you went into.
They're very cool.
Okay, uh, thank you, board. AAEA this year has a first as well. AAEA had a summer conference and it was all virtual. From my perspective, and I attended the entire thing, learned quite a bit of new information. One of a, a point of, I guess, learning for me was that I needed to learn all I could about the COVID-19 situation and how our point of contact would be used in conjunction with the Department of Health. Now, I must tell you, I know Ms. Kendra Clay and, and Ms. Nurse Kathy Lauder have gone through the training for, is it two, at least two R training. I've gone through the superintendent training and I've done it twice and I can tell you that it is a labor-intensive position. What Ms. Lauder is going to have to do is we've created a, a separate phone number and phone for her for any, kinda like a Batmobile phone, you know? Should anything happen in regard to the point of contact, if we should have positives within our district and our community that have close contact with students. So we're working with her. We will bring you additional information at the next board meeting. I will continue to, as we learn new things, forward them to you by email. So you'll be up to date as, as well as can be done. So, uh, the conference overall was very good. Uh, interesting person to listen to at the very end to close up was Houston Nutt. He was inspiring and fun and I've not listened to Houston Nutt for a full hour. I can tell you that he was fun and all that, but I was as tired as he was at the end of his presentation. So anyway, I enjoyed it and I appreciate the ability that you provided us to attend to. I do not know how many of our administrators attended virtually. I know that it was fewer than normal, but we saved some money by not having to travel to La Rock and have the hotel expense and, and AAEA did reduce the, the cost of the registration, so. Interesting times and I was proud of AAEA and thought they did a really good job hosting the conference virtually for not having had any experience. It's okay, Ms. Cook, may I go to Jay?
Sure.
Okay. The board is, and I have spoken over time, I think even over months, about the potential property acquisition and you can see it in your appendix, to purchase several pieces of, or several parcels owned by Northwest Medical Center. And it's in your, your agenda. I do have an offer and acceptance that I have signed for $265,000. Now, that's quite a bit of money, but it's quite a bit of property right down here in town. The interesting thing is, uh, the plans could be that, uh, we partner with Tyson and other companies to provide a regional food bank there. So over time, I believe our partners will help us with the cost of the property and certainly with any improvements on the property. So the original thought was that all of the parcels would be around $250,000. There was another parcel, on the slot parcel that the, that the hospital, and you can see it, it's in, what color is that? Purple, yes. In your picture, that the hospital failed to put in the original request. And so they're basically, it's a $53,000 additional parcel that they're allowing us to add on for $15,000 if the board would be so inclined. So a total of $265,000 for those pieces of properties. So it's right adjacent to our Harbor Medical Plaza or our Support Services Building. It comes with a large closet hut that we could use for our social workers and we could also use it as a repository for clothing and items that we distribute to our families. So I, I think although it, it, uh, it's not a cheap piece of property, it could be a piece of property that, that could serve us and serve our needs over time in a great way. That being said, uh, we do have in K, some properties out there that we've owned and owned for a long time that we're not even using. So I, I'd like to ask your request, or request in just a moment to explore what those properties are and to see if we need to continue to pay taxes and upkeep for those pieces of property or should we divest of those smaller parcels. Anyway, so my recommendation, Madam President, is that, that the school board agree to purchase the property for $265,000 from Northwest Medical.
Any discussion?
How much more property was it for the additional $15,000?
It's the, for the $15,000, it was that parcel to.
How much was it in, in land was?
Well, I know how many square feet it is. I believe it's in this, Nick, you could help me with this because. Oh, I need to thank Nick publicly. Uh, Mr. Emerson has helped us at no cost provide the offer and acceptance to the hospital. So I believe he may even know how many square feet that is to the, to the amount. I know that it's, it shows. What does it say? Quorum Real Estate and Trust, is that what that says? It's hard for me to see.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Ramos, the exact square footage of that particular piece and that long skinny piece.
I don't remember either exactly how big it is.
Lot and a half.
But for $15,000 it.
It's a good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
You still feel like there's still a good opportunity to have this part of this property with some other community partners to be a community outreach, um, use it for a community outreach like food bank.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with Tyson or whoever.
Tyson's been the leading driver of that effort. And they've really gone over and above and provided protein for our community in a significant way since March thirteenth. In fact, we were in talks about how to use this property should it become available with the polar freeze and make it a distribution center for the region. So they've come alongside of us and really have added more value to that conversation than I ever dreamed.
Mr. Hayes? Good?
Feel good about it?
So we need a motion to move forward, correct?
If that pleases the board.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the offer and acceptance of the $265,000 with Northwest Medical.
There's a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mrs. Creek to purchase the property from Northwest Medical. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. I'll forward the offer and acceptance through Ms. Kendra Clay tomorrow to Northwest Medical and, and we'll see if they accept. Okay, I'll put this up here so I don't forget it. K is a district property plan. I briefly mentioned, uh, the idea of maybe pooling together. I think there are some properties out there that you may not even know we own. And I think it would be a really good idea to pull all of those together for you to review. They technically own to, are owned by this school board and this community. And if we're paying taxes and upkeep and insurance in some cases in regard to the facilities that we own, I think that you need to know those things and you need to help guide me on what you'd have to do with those, those properties. I know, Ms. Cook, you and I had discussed potentially, uh, talking about all of our properties and maybe a coordinated effort at potentially a work session?
Yes.
And so if you'd like to discuss that now, that'd be great. If not, I can march on and do some things on my own if you'd have me do so.
Board, um, we would like to have a work session in September. It was discussed that possibly not having it on the day of the board meeting, but on another day and sometime in that month is there, uh, so that we could utilize not only a work session time but a time to travel throughout the district to see properties we might need to relinquish or properties that we are currently building. I feel like we need an update, a visual update on some of our, um, building plans and then also to have a, possibly a, uh, the rest of the work session to talk through how everything's working with COVID.
Do we have some potential dates?
That's what I'm, I'm open in September, so I know that we have, um, Dr. Cleveland, is there? A time, you're gone the whole week of, Mr. Emerson?
I'm out the fifteenth to the twelfth, but don't let that hold you up.
Does anyone, is there a date if we don't, um, is there a date the third week that is?
The week of the thirteenth?
Uh, well, we have the board meeting on the, on that one. Wait, I'm looking at August. The board meeting on, yes.
So the week of the thirteenth.
Is there a certain day of the week that would be better than another day?
I have the board meeting on the fifteenth, is that not correct?
No, it should be the eighth.
Oh, should be the eighth.
Second Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I had failed to see that, okay.
Good thing we got that figured out.
Probably not Monday and not Friday, so.
You got that figured out?
I said, good thing we did, you'd have missed the board meeting.
Oh, for sure.
Is there a day of the week that's better to pull off more?
The one up there on the Tuesday.
What's the best day for this?
Eddie, do you have a Wednesday or Thursday? How's Wednesday the six, wait, am I still looking? Sixteenth?
Works for me. It's your discretion.
Okay, Wednesday the sixteenth, let's have, um.
That works for them.
No, what if we did ten to two, like, is that, what, or is there a longer? You want 11:30 to four?
No, I don't care if it's longer, I just don't wanna take a, I mean, and I will if I need to, but that's like the week to go around.
Okay, let's, let's keep our same time, which is 11:30 to four.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, cause then I have a whole set of numbers.
Okay, great.
Okay, we can do that. We can even break the cardinal rule and eat on the bus if we need to.
So 11:30 to four on the sixteenth?
Sounds good.
Everybody's good with that?
Okay. Thank you so much. I think it'll be important and I know that we missed one, one in July, so that makes a lot of sense. Ms. Cook, that concludes my section.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, I think you're.
Dr. Cleveland, members of the board, so I also wanna congratulate Mr. Emerson on his new addition to his family, so congratulations.
Well, and since you mentioned it, thank you for the gift that you guys went in on. I appreciate that.
That's for your wife and family.
Thank you.
Maybe more for her.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
So a couple of things, today is a very special day, not just because we have a board meeting, but this is the first time teachers have been in the building in five months. Pretty powerful day, uh, the curriculum instruction. Pretty powerful day. Uh, the curriculum instruction team made it out to a lot of the buildings. And it was very powerful and, um, the administrators did amazing. If, if I ever had a chance, it would be right now to say we have amazing administrators in Springdale. We're very proud of them. Also, this is special because Dr. Cleveland was able to give his first address to the staff. And so that was also great. So I want to kind of go over some stuff with you regarding, um, I'm going to kind of skip around here. Sorry about that. So, um, this year we're, we're in a pandemic and so we're having to do things a little different. And I do think the feeling is correct for what we're doing moving forward. So I want to first go over some of the things that we've done and what we're going to do. And then I would like to leave you with some of the plans that the buildings are doing. But, um, Dr. Cleveland welcomed the administrators back to school on July 23rd. It was in the Performing Arts Center and as you can see the pictures here, um, he really talked about building a culture within the district, but also about really speaking to, to leadership and what leadership looks like and what it means to him. He was also able to give the staff a really, uh, good picture of who he is as our leader. And I thought he did an amazing job. He also discussed leadership is a choice and it is a choice. Um, and we have amazing leaders that listened to it and really felt that it was a powerful morning for them. Not just their internal understanding of what they are and who they are as a leader, but also getting to really know Dr. Cleveland. So that was great. That afternoon, uh, we had Mr. Hayes, Ms. Clay, Mr. Donnell and led by Dr. Cleveland, really addressing the needs. So one of the things they thought, um, and this came out of one of our leadership meetings, is how do we make sure we're meeting the needs of the principals? So they sent out a Google Doc and they said, principals, whatever questions you may have, stick it in here and we're going to address it. And we spent the afternoon really addressing the needs of the principals, asking lots of questions about procedures and plans and what would it look like and how would we address this and, and really feeling supported in their work. And so I think that was a really good afternoon and the principals felt that they, their time was valued, knowing that their answer, uh, questions were answered. So that's what was on the afternoon of July 23rd. An amazing start to the year. I think it really set the tone for moving forward in this environment that we're in. Then the following day, um, we had our, um, teaching and learning. So just kind of as an example, um, when we, we normally follow, um, the superintendent's message back with, what is it teaching and learning going to look like in the school? So our theme was kind of mission possible this year. As you know, we have our new, um, kind of theme this year is being connected because we know in a virtual environment, being connected is going to be critical in what we do. So we also felt that it was important for the people that came, that their time was valued and that we gave them time to just work. And so our focus was on what does it look like to create a model, uh, remote lesson? And so that's kind of what we did. We, we started with creating the idea we do and now you go back and take it back to your teachers. And so, um, we don't want teachers to feel like a remote lesson and a face-to-face lesson or an onsite lesson are different. They're not. It's, should be a quality lesson that can be delivered in either method. And so that was what we, um, focused on. The other thing is we felt it was important that we didn't just have administrators here, that we also had instructional facilitators and teachers within the building. Because they're the ones that actually are going to be creating these lessons and we wanted them to bring that message back into the buildings, which the PD here normally goes back into the schools, uh, PD. So we did some onsite lesson creation and really, we, I think three or four of the hours were just them going back and creating lessons and that they could take back and then use in the school. Um, they learned a lot of new tools. The district has purchased Screencastify, which you're going to actually see, see some examples today, and also EdPuzzle. So those were the two things that will help be embedded into these lessons to make them, uh, more, more, uh, virtual. So our focus is we have to create a lesson that's highly engaging, engaging for students. And we also know, I was talking with Dr. Cleveland, you know, sitting in front of a video for seven hours, watching somebody teach is not going to engage our kids. And if you know you've watched a video, you've probably clicked a little button to see how much time you've had and realized it was a six-minute video and you're in like 30 seconds into it and you're already like, oh my gosh. So how do we, how do we create these lessons where they're not those kind of expectations or environments that we're creating? So create expectations that are really engaging for our students. Um, then we talked about, and you'll kind of see these little action plans and that's what you voted on to this evening, we shared last week, but these are things that we'll always kind of come back to for our ready-to-learning plan that we, that we accepted. So Monday of this week, Dr. Cleveland, after he's already shared with the principals, now we have our new teachers come back. The new teachers had a very, very busy day. They started with Dr. Cleveland, um, in the morning at 8:00 AM. And Ms. Cook, she did a, a great, um, introduction of everybody and welcomed them and they were very appreciative of that. At nine o'clock, they went into some training specific for ESL and Special Ed. We also had, what does it look like in this curriculum environment that they, what kind of lessons would they would be creating with our instructional specialist? And then Mr. Donnell finished the afternoon off with the requirements for our, our test, which is our evaluation system with our novice teachers. Um, you'll see August 11th, which is today, um, this was the big one. So as you guys remember, we used to have the big back-to-school, you know, faculty celebration and PAC and that wasn't a possibility this year. So Dr. Cleveland did a Zoom meeting with all the different schools and most of the schools, uh, had big screen setup and so people as a faculty watched his message from eight to nine o'clock. And again, Ms. Cook, you did a great job. Thank you for doing that. But his message was very powerful in that we're all in this together, creating a culture of moving forward, positive culture of creating, what does it look like in these times to make sure that we're engaged with the students and the families and staying connected? So we started off the year, now what does it look like for the rest? So kind of picture for a second that we took all of our PD days throughout the entire year and we moved them all to the beginning of the school year. But we still had the requirements of what we had spread out. So for instance, in elementary, we had the roots training spread out for three different ways, days. So now we're moving them all to the front. So elementary looks very different than middle and junior high. And so the elementary are required to get the roots training, days three, uh, excuse me, four, five and six, whereas the high school only has one day of, um, training. So kind of looks a little different, but I'm not going to go in detail of every single one of these. But if you'll notice on the 12th, uh, we divided out, they'll be doing roots training and then some of the people will be working on these remote lessons. Move over to August 13th, again, we've got remote lesson designing because this is big. It takes a while to create a lesson. Um, I know some of the family members of, our board members were creating these lessons and it's not easy. But they're pretty amazing when you look at them. So we want to make sure we have time for those to be designed. Ms. Fink and Ms. Tisher have done an excellent job of taking all the different content areas through the nine weeks and kind of dividing so everybody has a section to do. So hopefully at the end of these 10 days, we'll actually have a nine works worth, worth of, of curriculum for the students. We're also, if you'll notice in the middle part for elementaries, they're working on Lexia Core Reading. This is a way to support our students, um, in remote settings and can also be used in the classroom. If you'll remember, we did our survey and one of the things that teachers said is we need to make sure we have our social emotional learning, um, component because we're very concerned about our students. So there is time that will be focused on conscious discipline. Uh, we have amazing people in our own district that are going to be providing the training along with OGC that, that provides some. You'll notice on Friday, we do have the chamber event. So it has not gone away. It's just going to look different this year. Uh, McDonald's called and said, we still want to provide breakfast for every school. So they're going to deliver breakfast to every one of our 31 schools in addition to some of our other locations. It'll start from 7:30 to 8:00. They'll be doing some announcements and people will be coming into their buildings. And then from about 8:00 to 9:15 or so, they'll be giving gifts and sharing out stuff like they would at the normal chamber event. But they really jumped on board and said, hey, we want to make this happen and what do we need to do? And so, uh, kudos to Trent's team. He was able to help facilitate all of this as well. And so we're excited about that. And then again, we have our OGC, which is really talking about what kind of behavior are we going to expect of our students? They've been gone. They've been gone a really long time. So what kind of behavior should we expect and how as teachers and administrators do we help facilitate their needs in this environment? So that's what that training will be about. And then in the afternoon, we'll do, um, some, uh, lesson planning. On the 17th, you can see we have more work days for teachers and also day four of Roots. Normally we only have five days. So like I said, we've got a lot of PD going in before this. On the 18th, you can see we're doing some basic, as you know. We were required in our learning plan to identify an LMS. We have three LMSs in our district and so an opportunity for people to actually learn more about their LMS. Most of them already know it, but it gives them an opportunity as well as some of their remote lessons. And then, um, on the afternoon of the 18th, specialty meetings. Normally we would have our groups meet like band, enquire and so forth. We are going to still hold those meetings, but they'll be done virtually. So that way, uh, we have one person, and I'll have to tell you, I think there's 40 different specialty meetings going on. They're all led by somebody. They've all given us agenda. They're all facilitating Zoom meetings. So it's a pretty daunting thing, but we've got amazing people. August 20th, again, Roots Day Six, um, some more lesson designing. The 19th, more Roots training, um, and also awareness training for secondary. And then on Friday, um, we really wanted to follow up with principals really allowing teachers to have time to, to think about, what does it look like to finish out the, um, the, the PD, but also say, okay, school's going to open on Monday. What are the basic logistics you have to know? And so they're going to be getting feedback all these next two weeks from teachers to help facilitate some of those conversations. So that one hour in the morning will be very important for the teachers and then the rest of the day will be continued with lesson planning. So that's kind of the big overall PD. Um, and now I want to go just a little more specific in one or two schools. I know that was a lot, but do you have any questions? We are still required on some of those days, um, to follow the ADE guidelines for PD. And so some of those days will be required PD that they have to do. There's not very much, I think there's two hours of required this year that they'll be getting in that time.
How often are they in person and how often are they going to stay?
Uh, in this PD?
Well, just throughout the next two weeks.
They should be in their building every single day with the PD, with the exception of the specialty meeting. The specialty meeting, because it's all the entire districts coming together, we're Zooming that one. Um, there are a few schools where, where teachers maybe feel a little more comfortable in their classroom and so they might be actually in the same building, just Zooming in their classroom as opposed to in the cafeteria.
We're just going to get questions on if we're sending back, why aren't we doing in-person meetings?
They're all, they're all in, every one of these should be in person. Now, they are doing a lot, we're doing a lot of breakout just because that's the nature of our PD. You want your first grade class to work on lesson planning in your second. So the PD, some are big, some are small, some are broken apart. Some of the larger schools have a big meeting, but then are breaking into smaller, smaller sections. The ones that I went today were all held in the cafeterias of their buildings. Not in their normal locations, but in, in a location.
Sounds good.
Um, just quickly before I go on to the, the two elementary or the two plans, and I'm going to do those quickly, but, um, I was asked just a few minutes ago about the number of students that have chosen different plans. Um, and I will just say, looking at the information roughly, about 20% of our elementary students are choosing some sort of blended, which means about 80 of, 80% are choosing five days. The high schools, and I, I don't have the other ones written down, but the high schools, roughly about 52% of Harvard and about 36% of Springdale High School are choosing five days coming back. However, I want to be real clear, that was just a, the surveys we received. Each one of those are about 500 surveys short, so we're assuming they're coming back to the full five days.
How many are we short across the district right now?
Surveys? About, hmm, 5,000.
Did you say 52% Harvard and what'd you say, Springdale?
36.
Were five, for the five-day option?
Yes. But keep in mind that the other 500, which would be another 25% or so, will be five, we'll assume they're five, five days coming back. Yeah, so that will increase that percentage quite a bit. I think a lot of parents, when they didn't think anything was going to change, we had a lot of surveys going out. And so I think they just said, oh, I'm not, nothing's changing for me. And so they just didn't fill out the surveys. Where, where people are calling like mad, trying to find out every family's choice, just so we can plan accordingly. And of the ones that are choosing, uh, some sort of a blended option, it's a, it's about 50/50, I think, on those. Okay, so I do not want to spend a ton of time going over the, the reopening plans, but in, in the agenda, there are two. And I want to just give you, uh, some basic information. So first of all, the credit to these really probably should go to Ms. Fink and Ms. Tisher. So the idea is we spent all summer long listening to all the different things from all the different schools, talking about what the degree entry looked like when we start school. And so they pulled together documents that they felt would really help, uh, the principals go through step-by-step what it would look like in their building. And so again, these, this, the credit goes to them. But, um, if you'll see, I'm just going to talk about Elmdale for just a second. So the idea was when we, when they opened, they had their reopening plan. The idea was it shouldn't really just come from the principal because just like our team, we're better off together than we are in a single person making decisions. So the idea was who can you bring to the table to help create your school reopening plan? So the one that we've included is Elmdale. These are actually not due until August 14th because we wanted feedback from the other people in their building. And so these were two that were a little more complete than some of the other ones, but we did want to have support from, or input from parents and students and other individuals. So just quickly, if you'll, um, look on page two of Elmdale's, the idea is how do we approach every possible thing we can think of that's going to happen in the school? Like, almost like your student, you wake up in the morning, what would it look like step by step? From them getting on the bus, from them going to school, all the different things that happen. But we also have to do that from the lens of a teacher, because what's it going to look like for a teacher? And so if you can see, you'll see, for instance, art, I am going to go a little more in detail on that one and kind of follow suit. But in art, we're talking about what's going to happen with students for art. And so for instance, in Elmdale, they're going to move their art to the cafeteria. And their plan is that students are going to wash their hands before they travel. They're going to wear their mask. For every single grade level, they're going to actually get to the cafeteria a different way. So for instance, fifth graders will go out the back door, walk down the sidewalk, enter the front of the building and go into the cafeteria. Fourth graders, they're the closest to the cafeterias. They're going to travel down the hall to the cafeteria. So you can imagine how detailed it is and I could go on and on and on about what they have for art. In addition to that, they have their schedule. What is it going to look like? So everybody's on board with the art. You talk about art, you also talk about the materials. So if you'll go down, they've addressed that by saying students are going to carry Ziploc bags and they're not going to share their materials and that they'll be able to clear, uh, clean those at the end of each day. And then if you turn the page to page three, we're still on art. They talk about how are you going to sanitize them? How are you going to make sure that students can socially distance when feasible? And they talked about, this is a great time because the cafeteria is so big, that they can also have safe spots around where students can go and actually take a mask break. Um, and then what are some other considerations for art? Well, they came up with some really great things. How about outside art? So art that's done outdoors, art on a cart, remote lessons in classrooms when, when necessary. Now, I'm not going to do that with every subject, but they did that for art. They did that for music. They did it for PE. They did it for library. So they were really thinking outside the box because these are the critical times when students are actually out of their classroom, going to different places. Then on page five, you can see what are they going to do for hallway transitions? Quite extensive. So how are we going to make sure that we maintain distance whenever possible? So when students are leaving the hallways or, or going into the hallways, they're going to sanitize. They've talked about how they're going to create small groups. Um, what are you going to do for students that like to touch the walls? And they've done all, all that in detail. And then of course, taking additional, um, supports when necessary. Bathroom breaks. This is going to be huge for elementary. So it's going to look completely different. And I'm not going to go through all the details, but they, all the, all the principals are thinking, okay, what is it going to look like? How do I minimize the number of students in the bathroom? How do I make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students, but at the same time making sure they're social distance? And you can go, um, read through it, how they're going to allow two boys, two girls at a time and so forth. So as I keep going through this plan, think about being a principal and think about in the past, you've opened up with culture building, basic procedures and curriculum. And now you're going into this whole shift of, I have to know where every kid is at every single moment in comparison to every other kid and making sure we've addressed all those. Um, then they go into recess because that's the time that we have to really consider students, um, being together and what are we going to do there? So if you'll notice, she talks about how she's going to divide the playground into multiple sections, still allowing the kids out there, but allowing for there to be some social distance between the students, um, as they're outside. but allowing for there to be some social distance between the students as they're outside. One of the things I thought Ms. Fink and Ms. Tisher did a really good job on is saying, what are some other things you might have to consider? Because when you're bringing this forward to a committee, they can help give you feedback and guidance. And so you'll see those others considerations that they've identified out there as well. Lunch is going to be big. So are we going to eat in the cafeteria or are we going to eat in the classrooms? And the answer is yes, depending on the school and the day and the month or whatever. But if you'll notice her plan, students will eat in the classroom and they'll begin that at the, at the beginning of the school year. And then based on that, they're looking at possible moving into some of the cafeteria and using that. So that's kind of her progression in that. And then the other is, what do we do when students get on the bus and get off the bus? Because students like to cluster, so they're talking about what would it look like? So they're again finding multer, multiple entry points into the building when they get off the bus. Where are they going to go? How are we going to separate students? How are we going to keep them safe? And you can go through and see in detail how she plans to do that. And then also, what is the system they're going to have in place for students that are getting on the bus? So they're going to have to have more of a systematic approach to students getting on the bus as opposed to just waiting there when the bus comes up, they go on it. They're going to have to do, announce the names and, and call them in to get in the buses. And then of course, the classroom setup. So what does a classroom setup look like? Well, with the blended approach, the class sizes in many cases will be smaller. But they're also having to think on certain days, most of the students may be there. And so what does the classroom look like? And as you can see, they've gone down, and this will probably get enhanced as we have more teachers have input on this document. But really, what is the bare minimum you need in the classroom for purposes of cleaning and also for setup and moving around? Keeping the desk apart, making sure they're all facing the same way whenever possible, maintaining distance whenever possible. And then making sure that their materials and supplies are organized as best as possible and not being shared. And then on the bottom of page eight, you'll see the other considerations. I know I, I, I went through that in a lot of detail, but there's a lot more detail than what I said. If you, if you get a chance, please read it from beginning to end. This is just one school's approach. Every school looks different, because every school is built different, every school has different needs. And so each of the schools are putting together these plans. There is also another one, I am not going to go through it, but it's, it's pretty detailed as well. And that's the one from Southwest Junior High. As you know, it's a little bit of an older school, so it has a little, few more challenges than some of the newer junior high schools. And so she's put together a really good plan on what that would look like for her school as well. But again, it's a lot of work going into this. The principals are trying to get school up and running, they're planning for nine days of professional development. They're trying to make sure that the students are safe in every way possible. They're reaching out, asking us for different things, and we're trying to help them all along the way. And kudos to Jeremy White and his team, because he is trying to say yes to every possible thing that is being asked. And he's doing an amazing job, so kudos to him for that, because there are a lot of requests right now. So are there any questions on?
And he's a pretty good dancer.
Hey, listen, I got to tell you, I have never laughed so hard when he came prancing in, into the, into the.
I understand the outtakes may be even better than.
Yeah, yeah.
I may, may have been privy to some outtakes.
Oh, my gosh.
Just made it.
He, he definitely made it, I will say that. Are, are there any questions about the post-plan?
Will you send the rest of the, of these when you get them? And then we had talked yesterday about the possibility of visiting, maybe next week, visiting a school or two to see how they're, when they're ready, how, how things are going to flow.
And it's kind of interesting, if you walk into the buildings, you'll just see arrows, like you've got arrows as you're walking around. And really, it's kind of training the, the students to say, make sure you're following this way, I know you're in a hurry, do this. You know, you think about your passing periods, and a lot of times kids, especially the older kids, like to hang out during the passing periods and gather. And so how do we make sure that students aren't gathering during those passing periods and going straight to the classroom? So like, what does that look like? And it's going to look different for different buildings, but really getting students to know that we've got to keep, keep the traffic flowing through it. So, yes. Was that just, did you want us to just set it up for you or for the rest of the board?
Well, we were trying to see if maybe we could video or do something too.
Okay.
So we're just, whatever ends up happening, I mean.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to have Mr. Donnell come forward, and then Ms. Tisher will follow him, and then Ms. Fink will follow him. Sorry, I got to go backwards, we're in the wrong order here.
Before I introduce Mr. Stedlik, I want to say, I believe in the power of thank you, and I want to say thank you. Because the purchase of that piece of property by central support is going to be huge for students, families, teachers and community. It really is going to be huge, and I'm excited about it. I'd like to take this moment to introduce Mr. Wayne Stedlik, so that he can talk about some of the guidelines for athletics. And then I'll come up and talk about the band choir athletics.
I have my prop, athletics, my prop. I'll be brief. When you look back, a little history lesson, we go back to March thirteenth, when the AAA shut everything down. We're down in Hot Springs at the state basketball tournament and an eighties convention. And the governor called Lance Taylor, and we had to shut things down. And so that's kind of where we started our process. Go to June one, the governor and the, and the Department of Health said, okay, you can start doing some workouts with your kids, which is a great day for our coaches, because our coaches have been doing things via Zoom and not being able to have great relationship building opportunities with their kids. And so finally, June one, we can start having workouts, wearing masks, social distancing, all the great things that we're doing now with our amazing coaches and our kids. That got us in the process of getting down, because we did such a great job, because our coaches in our district did such a great job of social distancing, wearing the mask, that, and statewide, they did this. But we were able to get to July thirty-first, in which the governor, the AAA and the State Department of Health said, okay, let's go back and let's start doing normal things. So we can start having this week of football practice, this week of basketball practice, cross-country basketball, all the sports. Got to do things as normal. And just, it was a great day for our coaches. So then, fast forward to last week, the governor comes on last Friday and says, we're going to continue. So in theory, this is week seven of the AAA calendar. So we're doing what we do normally on week seven of the AAA calendar. And it's just great for our coaches and for our kids, that we've done things so well in this state and in our district, that we're having, doing things normally, except wearing masks and we're social distancing. But our kids are getting to work out and practice, they're getting to make moves, shoot the basketball, hit tennis balls. We had the first golf tournament in the state last week, Hot Springs Country Club. And so we're doing some really neat things with our coaches and our kids. This past week, I had a meeting with building administrators, SROs, transportation, maintenance, and my team, because the state requires us now that if you have an event with over a hundred people, you have to fill out paperwork. So there's an outdoor venue, there's an indoor venue. So Kevin Snavely, Patrick Scott, Betsy Barker took information, put it together. And last Friday, after Trent Jones looked it over and a few others, we sent that to the state. So they now have our information that, how we're going to mark bleachers, how we're going to mark seating, how we will allow people to attend games. And so it's a sign here that says, wear your mask. It's arrows pointing to here or there. It's how we will use, control and clean our restrooms. It's how we'll have concession stands, how we'll manage concession stands at a game, how we'll have prepackaged foods. If you're coming to a game for a hot dog probably or a bag of popcorn, probably not going to happen right now. We may have microwave popcorn, but a regular old hot dog, a lot of hands might touch that. So we have to be careful about that. We also have, at the end of that, how you exit. So we may come in this gate at a football game and leave out over there. So all that paperwork's been sent into the State Department of Health. And then we hope to hear back soon, because next week, we start benefit volleyball matches. We start benefit football games, it's not too far away. And so we, this, the, the team of coaches and, and the people that we're working with every day to make this all possible has really been good. I bring this up here from the standpoint that we're doing something else that maybe other schools aren't going to do, but we're going to try it. We're going to put a shield on the inside of the helmet on the top, which you see quite a bit on college and pro games. There's also a shield down here. And SHUT, which is a helmet company, has a product that we're going to buy some for both high school teams and see how this works. So that way, it's an extra layer of protection for our kids and our opposing teams. But we're excited about what's going to take place. We look forward to the governor's talk every day, because we think whenever he talks, there's going to be some good news. And it's been goo, good news the last couple of weeks, and we hope that continues. Questions?
Do you think there's going to be any trickle down from these college conferences cancelling their seasons? Will that trickle down into high school?
What I think is going to happen, because Oklahoma has said, we're going to play. Missouri has said, we're going to play. Texas has backed up things for the big schools a couple of weeks, but the smaller schools are on schedule. Tennessee is playing as normal. So I think each state has their own governing body. And yes, they're going to watch to see what the Big Ten has done and the Pac-12. But I think each state's going to say, this is what our numbers look like here. And because we play schools in Oklahoma or Missouri, that's all good for us, I think we're going to play. And, you know, we have, we have some, some great relationships, we have a board member who helps us out occasionally on AAA information, but I think we're going to play.
Are we going to see what's the percentage that you, and I know it's a prediction, of how many fans will be allowed in?
Well, when we did the paperwork for the Department of Health, basically you take the football stadium and you take out every other bleacher. So if, if our stadium seat would just say six thousand, good number. All of a sudden, now you're down to three thousand, because we're going to take out, we're going to seat just like here, every other row. So now you're down to three thousand, and then when you put maybe four people together, a six-foot gap. Four people together, a six-foot gap, do that across the board. In theory, you're kind of probably going to eliminate another twenty-five percent. So do the math real quick, if we're cutting out a half and another quarter, we're down to about twenty-five percent, give or take.
What's the procedure if a kid tests positive, like during a game or things like that?
In a game?
Yeah.
Right after, or right after a game? What happens is that Kathy Lauder, who's done a phenomenal job this year, can't speak kindly enough about what she has done. Whenever a coach has contacted us about a situation, we immediately contact Kathy Lauder, and we go through that process from there. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Take my prop.
Okay, so I'm going to go over just a couple of things about band and choir. So we ended school in May, and then we did not receive guidance for band and choir in June. Did not receive guidance in band and choir in July, did not, and so it just, it went on and on and on. So finally, we received guidance for band and choir last week, and I wanted to share with you what some of those were. We've met over the last, since July, many times. Band and choir directors and I have just tried to plan and kind of look ahead and see what might be coming. And here's some of the things that are coming. I know that's a little tiny on the screen, you may have to look at the big one behind you, because there's a lot. So for band and choir students, it says, the first requirement is, is that musicians, directors and staff must be screened prior to any activity. And those screening questions are those three questions right there. Our band and choir directors already have a plan for that. They're going to use QR codes and have kids fill that out right as they get into class and take three to five minutes max to do that. There are also, in addition, the band directors and choir directors must have their temperatures checked each day. And then also, it says that they may wear face coverings indoors and maintain appropriate social distancing. And should only use their own equipment, school instruments may be assigned to a single stu, student. And then woodwind and brass players can play instruments outside only. Okay, so that was a big, our last meeting, we talked about that for band and choir, and that was a big point of contention. And, you know, I really respect all these, these professionals that I work with greatly. And, you know, you could feel just kind of the Debbie Downer kind of went down for a minute. And then somebody said this, which somebody always does, hey, listen, we're going to do this better than anybody. We're going to come up with a plan, and we're going to do it better than anybody. And so they're coming up with plans as we speak. String players, percussionists and auxiliary units are allowed to practice indoors with appropriate distancing. And woodwind and brass players should play six feet apart. We're looking at making templates for our teachers, whether it be a piece of nylon rope or something that has marks already in it, to where they can quickly, social distance kids, you know, have that laying outside and then pick it up, take it back inside, that type of thing. Also, woodwind brass players must have masks on with slits. So they make a specialty mask for woodwind brass players, believe it or not, that just has a flap that comes up. They play their instrument, they put the flap back down. So we're already looking at those options for those also. And then bell covers for woodwind and brass players are recommended. We are looking at this option as well. We started on this about three weeks ago before the guidance even came out, and so we have a good game plan for that. And then swabbing and removal of water from wind instruments must take place outdoors. And then on for choir, some of the requirements for choir are the same exact requirements for the questions, the screening questions, and the same requirements for the temperature check for the directors. And then they have four additional ones. Musician directors must wear sta, or must wear a face covering indoors and maintain appropriate social distancing. And masks are required for all singers. Enquirer students can sing outside only, however, they have to be twelve feet apart. So Clint Penalto, who knows Clint, everybody here. So Clint asked if he could meet yesterday, just with his top group, I think he said there was nineteen kids in that top group. And he met yesterday, just to kind of test drive this. And he said, boy, did we learn a lot. He talked about that they learned what they're going to have to do with like tuning forks, intonation, pitch, all of that, the phasing, all of that outside was much different than it was inside. Also, some of the ideas explored, I've talked with Mr. White about some of these, is some type of covering. I think our middle schools were pretty covered with the covers that are already there, the awnings, so that protect kids from like the sun and that, that type of thing throughout the day. But then we're also looking at junior highs that don't have quite, so some of the older junior highs don't have those awnings and stuff. We're looking at maybe some type of covering for those, and at the high schools, we're looking at that also. I want to tell you, these guidelines will be difficult, but I'm going to go back to what somebody said in our meeting the last time. They said it both in the choir and the band meeting, that, hey, listen, we're going to pay enormous attention to detail, because there's a lot of detail here that they have to pay enormous attention to. And we're going to do this better than anybody. And that's why I'm really super proud that I get to work with them every day on these types of things. Do you all have any questions or concerns or anything? Yes?
These guidelines were come up, they, they came up from the Department of Health?
Correct, the Department of Health, Arkansas Department of Health guidelines as of last week. Now, I will tell you, since the guidelines were released, there have been at least two more aerosol studies that were completed. So they were released on Wednesday, and then Thursday and Friday, two more studies came out. We're currently reviewing and, and hoping that we can present that information to the Arkansas Department of Health and get some flexibility on some of this. So that's where we're at right now with it.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how you can, and don't, I mean, I'm a football guy. But how the heck can you allow them to smash heads together? And that's okay, but they got to sing twelve feet apart, what the heck?
It's because of the, how the doctors have described.
I don't care you smash heads with people, you're going to have crap going everywhere.
Well, I will say, I'll say this again, that, you know, there was some, there was a moment when we met last week with both. We met first with choir and band directors together, and then there was a moment of really just down, everybody was a little down. But I think now, today, I've, I've spoke with several of those folks, and they are very excited with the plan that they have. Actually, I had somebody reach out while I was in here and say, hey, I've got a plan for this, it's going to happen, we're going to make this work. So I'm feeling pretty confident that, I, I know that everybody has experienced this, but the guidelines. So I'm feeling pretty confident that, I, I know that everybody has experienced this, but the guidelines have been like whack-a-mole game here lately. So I think that there's room for some flexibility here before, who knows, by the time we start school, some of these maybe have some more flexibility.
I'm 100% confident that we're going to make it work. It's just the same people coming up with these guidelines, it just makes no sense.
I agree. I agree with you.
Can you help me understand musicians, directors and staff must wear a ma- a face covering indoors?
Correct.
And then it says choir students can sing outside only.
So what they're saying with that is, is that if, if I wanted to teach, whole note gets four counts, half note gets two counts, whole, a quarter note gets one count. If I want to teach that inside, you have to wear a mask while you're inside and teaching that. But if you're going to sing at all, you have to go outside.
With a mask on.
With a mask on.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
The flap is what really cracks me up though. Okay, I mean, like, we've had like flap gate for like the last week with band directors. And they're always like, you know, hey, what if we did this? There really is a mask like that and it, and, but what do they tell you not to do with your mask? Touch it, but what do you have to do with the flap?
So when you go out to sing, you have to have a mask on?
You have to have a mask on.
While you're singing outside 12 feet apart.
Correct. That was something else that Clint said too, that the, you know, that they're really exploring masks that don't reduce the decibel level and then allow a kid to take a big breath like, like that and it not suck to their face and not be able to protect their, their, their voice. So, okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's going to be fun to follow that. By the way, I just tried. And if I take a big breath, mine sucks into my mouth. So it's a good thing I am not a singer. Um, I actually have great news and celebration to share with everyone. So I'm really excited about my items on the agenda this evening. Um, so Lakeside Junior High has just accomplished a tremendous feat and I'm going to call it the trifecta. Lakeside Junior High, as you all know, had the Arkansas Teacher of the Year with Mr. Joel Lucado. Um, and they also now have the Arkansas Middle Level Counselor of the Year and the Arkansas Library Media Specialist of the Year. And so you're going to get to meet both of those individuals this evening. So first, I would like to announce that the Arkansas School Counselor Association, his name is Lauren Willis of Lakeside Junior High, the 1920 Arkansas Middle Level School Counselor of the Year. And I'm going to go ahead and have Lauren come up because she's here with us this evening. Um, she's been waiting patiently. And they noted in her award that, uh, she was chosen because of her leadership skills, advocacy for her profession and her expertise and, um, said that she is nothing but first class. And so, um, I've invited Lauren just to kind of share how in a pandemic world, her association intends to celebrate her at the appropriate time. And, um, so here's Lauren Willis.
Thank you, Mrs. Tisher. And thank, let me get some of this. Um, first off, I would like to say, uh, thank you, school board members and Dr. Cleveland and the rest of our, um, central administration team for, um, recognizing this honor, especially under, um, these certain times. I know that, uh, there are many other important, um, items on the agenda to be discussing. So, um, that is, it's very special and I appreciate it. Um, this summer, I received, uh, the exciting news, um, from our Arkansas School Counselor Association President, um, that I had, that I was, um, that I received this honor. And truly, I was surprised. Um, last year, Anique Downing at Springdale High was selected as the School Counselor of the Year from, um, you know, from Springdale District. And to have Springdale highlighted in this way two years in a row is, is, um, not common. Um, but it's, it's very special. So I truly was surprised and thankful. Um, so our, our president honored me at our summer virtual conference in July. And that was, that was very special. Um, and I believe that a plaque is going to be delivered to Lakeside, um, at some point this year. Uh, and it'll be, um, presented, you know, to our school and it'll be hanging in the Lakeside, um, Counseling Center. Um, I would like to just take a moment to say thank you to my administration team, to my, um, my staff, teachers, um, my registrar, and especially my co-counselor, Sheri Neal. I would not be able to do anything that I do or accomplish anything without my team. Um, Dr. Cleveland, you mentioned the word opportunity this morning in your address to, um, the district. And that is exactly the mindset that I've had since March 13th and that I will continue to have throughout this year. Although I'm physically only at Lakeside, I communicate and work with many educators across the district at all levels. Um, and we are ready for whatever comes to us this year. We will take this unique opportunity to serve and educate all of our students in the Springdale School District. And I'm just very thankful to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Willis. Okay, so next from, also, let me get some of this too. Also from Lakeside Junior High, we have Mr. Brian Johnson, who has been selected as the Arkansas Association of Instruction Media, um, the AAIM organization. He has been, uh, chosen as the Arkansas School Library Media Specialist of the Year. And I have invited, uh, Mr. Johnson here to address you like Ms. Willis did. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland and the board for recognizing this award. Usually, usually they hold the conference in the spring. It's down in Hot Springs or it's in various locations. And this year we had a virtual conference and usually there's a banquet, you have a chance to kind of get some recognition. So it's really nice to have, have a moment with you guys tonight. There's a plaque coming that'll come to Lakeside, I think, in recognition of the award. But, um, I have a lot of people to thank for this. We have a great leadership team at, at Lakeside, as you know. And I'm really grateful to Dr. Shepherd because he's really, I was talking with Ms. Willis a little bit about this earlier this week. Um, we really have, he's really instilled in us kind of a why not attitude. And just that, hey, here's this crazy idea, here's this crazy instructional idea. Why not? You know, hey, this is good for our kids. It's out of the box, but why not? And I think it just kind of spills down to our staff. Um, I'm really grateful for my, just that he, he, uh, he's kind of instilled in us. Um, I also want to reach out and just, just say thank you to my assistant, Ted McConiflor, who is simply amazing. If you've been in the library, all the artsy stuff that happens in there, that's her, that's not me. Um, so I'm really grateful to her for that. But, uh, thank you for the chance to, just to share and, um, stop by at the library anytime. We're always trying crazy stuff to make our kids' education better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next item on my part of the agenda is the Advanced Placement at a Glance Report. Typically, I would have Mr. Fontenopoulos come and address you in person and deliver the report. But I kind of thought, speaking of outside of the box, it would be really interesting tonight to ask Mr. Fontenopoulos to use Screencastify, which we have purchased for all of the teachers in the district, to deliver the AP report to you so you could have an idea what Screencastify looks like. Um, the comprehensive AP at a glance report is linked in your agenda. And so you have access to the full report at any time. Mr. Fontenopoulos, um, is just going to give us a quick overview via Screencastify.
Hello, Dr. Cleveland and hello, school board. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk to you about our 2020 Advanced Placement Scores. I'm going to do that using our 2020 Advanced Placement at a Glance Report. And, uh, if you have any questions at any time, you can stop this presentation and ask Dr. Smith, ask Mrs. Tisher. You can always reach out to me. I've got an open door. I've got my email list here at the end of this. And you guys, uh, please just reach out. There's a major theme that I see throughout this, uh, report. And I don't want to lament or stay on any one thing for very long. This ought to take about four to five minutes. Um, and again, if you have any question, please reach out. That theme is less is more. We have less students taking the AP exams than, um, and when that's been going on for, as you're going to see, for over the past five years. Uh, but we have more students passing at a higher rate. I think that's kind of a, a neat, uh, moment that we can talk about. 1,172 students in 2020 took an AP exam. And, uh, compare that to last year in 2019, almost 1,400. However, this year, we had 56% of our students make a three, four, or five, uh, versus last year in 2019, uh, 46%. And if you remember, I believe it was two years ago, Doc, um, uh, our governor, uh, enacted the rule using the Arkansas Department of Higher Education, that if you made a three on an AP exam, you were given college, you were immediately, uh, earned and awarded college credit if you were going to a state-funded college. So, uh, every time you see that three, four, and five, you're, you're seeing kids that are developing a, a college transcript right there. But again, less students, but more pass rate, but a, but a better, but a better pass rate. That's what you're going to see throughout. Here you can see the trend over the last five years of what's been going on. Uh, in 2016, total test takers, total exams given, the numbers or the percentage of threes, fours and fives, and how that just has gone up every year from 2016, from 40% to now 50, 6.3%. And then you can compare that to, for instance, the high schools here. I've got them listed. The number of students taking the exams and how that's gone down. Except for SOI, this, it's, it's, it's gone up from one student in 2016 to 117, to just this last year. And then you can see SHS from 602 down to 308. HBHS, 798, all the way down to 584. And again, um, you can stop this at any time and, and discuss these numbers. So here is, uh, something I'm really proud of. 190, uh, stu- or 190 exams were scored a five. And, uh, this is an increase of 18 from 2019, while the whole number of high school students who were actually testing went down, some 222 students. Um, again, and this is the number of exams broken down. You can look at them from year to year. Uh, and again, that's 190 of these signs went into yards, uh, went, uh, around our, um, around our district. Um, of course, there was multiple students that received more than just one sign because they made multiple fives. And again, during the height of this pandemic that we're in, these students were distance learning. And, um, you know, thanks to the technology afforded them, thanks to, uh, the leadership provided to our administrators who provided that to our, 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 our teachers. Uh, again, to increase the number of five score during the pandemic era, I think that's just incredible. I think that's a, I think that's a really cool moment that we, um, might get paused to and, uh, and just kind of, you know, wow. In all the era of not so good news right now, here's some good news. And then we can see the high schools broken down even further. Uh, here's the number of students and the, and the scholars, the scholars with honors, the AP scholars with distinction and recognition. And here they are, Samuel Loneman, David Pelkey, Pedro Manon, and Jack Snolly. These are students that, um, were considered our national AP scholars for, uh, they scored four or higher, at least eight exams during their, uh, high school career. And again, uh, we can see that, um, and compare that to last year. That's what that is. You can see over the past five years what Harvard's been doing. They're, and they've been growing, all the, all the, all the high schools have been growing. Their percentage of students scoring a three or higher. Same thing at Springdale High School. You can see their numbers are going up every year. And Don Tyson School of Innovation, we can look at them over the last four years and see that their numbers are going up as well. And then we can go back and look at our, uh, our junior highs and see how they're doing. And again, we got 57% of the students at Central Junior High School that took their AP Human Geography, uh, exam, um, actually scored a three or better. That is to say they got college credit. You've got 10th graders out there walking around with, uh, a, a college transcript in the, in, in, in the make. I think that's way cool. Southwest Junior High School, they had, um, 63% of their test takers score three or better. 40% at George Junior High and 50% at Lakeside. So again, awesome stuff. And then here are some definitions that you might want to take a look at if you were to look at some of the, what it takes to be an AP scholar with honors, AP scholar with distinction. Little news report that KNWA was kind enough to do. And then here's our signs. We've got, uh, that, that we had out there that are in people's yards. Alyssa, Mr. Stewart. It's just so cool. Got some, uh, some really good news there in that regard. Again, if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Uh, my, uh, email is, is right there. And again, my, I've opened door and love to chat with you about our, our academic excellence here in our district. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and so one of, as Mr. Fontenopoulos mentioned, um, to have an increase in the number of students who passed the AP exam during the pandemic is pretty phenomenal. As you know, um, the fourth quarter in an AP class is go time. That's when you're hitting the instruction the hardest, preparing for that exam. And all of our students were doing that from home. And they also had to take their test at home, which was historic and had never happened before. Um, and so we're very proud. Uh, Ms. Carol Turley, our International Baccalaureate Candidate at Springdale High School, um, also prepared just a short screencast for you to update you on the number of IB students who've received the esteemed International Baccalaureate Diploma. Um, and this, uh, video will go quickly, but, um, is essential in highlighting the work of these students and, um, highlighting this tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. And, uh, as you all know, Ms. Turley gives, um, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day to help our IB students, um, accomplish these great feats.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Cleveland. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present to you the 2020 Springdale High School IB Diploma recipients. I am forever grateful to you and the district's administration for the continued support that you have given to the IB faculty and IB candidates. Your belief in us means everything. It seems so long ago when Springdale High School received authorization to be an IB World School in 2005. Two years later, our first class of IB Diploma candidates completed their IB Core Requirements and Assessments. That year, we had IB Diploma recipients and we have every year since. This year's recipients and their cohort were extraordinary. They were involved in numerous extracurricular activities such as sports, the arts, mock trial, and student council. This makes their achievement in earning the IB Diploma that much more impressive. I am extremely proud of their accomplishments. Without further ado, let me introduce you to this year's IB Diploma recipients. I'm sure you're wondering where these 12 outstanding young people are going to attend college. As in years past, some had chosen to leave the area in order to pursue their undergraduate degree. Vanessa Rojo will be attending Brown University. Chloe Reed has chosen to attend Drury University. And two of our students, Isaac Comarine and Margaret Wilson, are attending Hendrix College. With the current pandemic situation, many more of them have chosen to stay closer to home. We have John Paul Hignight, Alejandro Gomez, Noah Hilliard, Sarah Kirsch, Ariana Ponce, Zachary Boothavon, and Stephanie Solis, who will be attending the U of A. Aracelina Herr Hernandez wants to be a dental assistant, so she has chosen to attend Northwest Arkansas Community College. Board members and Dr. Cleveland, I know one thing for sure. Because of your support in the IB Diploma program, all of the young people in the video and their fellow IB cohort members are exceptionally well-prepared for the next stage in their lives. On their behalf, I say thank you.
Okay, and so, congratulations to our IB Diploma recipients. So I just wanted to point out that Ms. Turley had never used Screencastify before, and Mr. Fontenopoulos was a novice user. And they graciously agreed to do this and will now be able to share their experiences with other teachers in our district as they're planning lessons using Screencastify this week. The other thing I wanted to say is Jack Snally, who was here earlier, you could see that he was an AP Scholar of Distinction, which means that he has already scored on eight AP exams, passing at either a four or a five, and he's going into his 12th grade year. And then Draco Tatios, that was here from Springdale High School, is an IB student with intent to try for the IB Diploma this year, and so, we're very proud of them. Okay, and now on to Ms. Fink. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Board. I'm going to continue our celebration this evening, and I'm going to invite Abby Russell to come forward. Abby Russell was our 2020 Springdale Teacher of the Year. She is the East Facilitator at Knapp Elementary School. And Abby was named one of the 12 regional finalists for Arkansas Teacher of the Year, and she just had the opportunity to have, to be recognized at the Governor's mansion, and so, I wanted to give her an opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Board and Dr. Cleveland, for recognizing this honor, and Mrs. Fink for inviting me here. It would not have been possible without all of the support from the teachers at my school, and Mrs. Covington, my principal, and our leadership team and district administration. I couldn't do anything without them. And as I tell my teachers, I really don't do anything, my students do everything, so it makes it pretty easy. And I just really want to thank the Board and Dr. Cleveland for giving me the opportunity to do what I love in the district I love with the students I love. So from my MAT internship, I knew I wanted to be in Springdale, and this is where my heart is, and so, I just really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Finally, I wanted to give an update for our VIA DTSOI. Just a reminder, a little bit of history about where we've been and where we are now. The intent to enroll form opened, I believe it was early July when we first released that for parents to commit to the intent to enroll. The deadline for parents to complete the intent to enroll form was July 31st with an extension to August 5th. And as of August 5th, we had 1,820 elementary students that had completed their intent to enroll. Currently, we have 1,217 students who have completed all of their paperwork to be a virtual student. This number is changing. This was the most current numbers I had as of 5:00 this evening, but tomorrow, these numbers will increase because, as I'm going to talk about in a minute, they have started Chromebook distribution, and we have families that are coming to pick up Chromebooks that had not yet completed all their paperwork. So they're catching those peoples that are coming through the line. So these are our numbers for elementary at VIA. Secondary numbers for 6th through 12th grade, we have students that are completely virtual, who will be learning 100% from home, and that is the first number that you see past the grade level. And then we also have students who are enrolled and blended, which means they complete part of their learning face-to-face at VIA DTSOI, and the other part is blended through their virtual program. And so, that's the second set of numbers that you see with the grade level. So we have a total of 1,176 through 12 students who have committed to be 100% virtual and 321 who are opting in to be blended for next year. So for grand total, that's as of today, 2,708 virtual school students, and Ms. Bortz says that she expects that number to rise. I also reached out to her and said, what is your total enrollment at DTSOI? And she said, right now, they're sitting at around 3,400 students. So I just want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Hopper and Ms. Bortz. They have been tirelessly working to develop this K-5 program from the ground and growing our 612 program. So the teachers have already been working prior to today at VIA DTSOI, learning things that they need to learn that teachers in buildings will not need to learn, such as Edgenuity and Pathblazers, that is the curriculum platform that we are going to be using with our virtual students this year. Edgenuity is the 612 program that they've been using since the start of VIA for 612. Pathblazers is the elementary version of Edgenuity. And so, teachers have been working and training and learning how to incorporate these platforms into their learning management systems. They started Chromebook distribution yesterday, and I drove by today, and I think Dr. Smith drove by today, and I was just blown away at the line of traffic that was going down Hilton Road for parents trying to get their Chromebooks. I felt very bad for the DTSOI staff because it rained most of the day today, and I think they got a little wet distributing Chromebooks. Teachers are also designing fly-by-care packages for our students, our little students that are going to be in our virtual program, because we know that students are going to need manipulatives, they're going to need writing instruments, they're going to need sketchbooks, writing journals for them to do part of their work from home. So our elementary VIA staff is, they are designing these fly-by-care packages that will be distributed probably the second week of school. Next week, they are starting family orientations, and the families will be coming, small groups, social distance, wearing masks, but they will get to meet and see their virtual teachers. And they're going to train families and students on how to advocate for themselves and how to ask for help when they need it. And they're going to teach students about email etiquette and what that looks like when you are emailing your teacher or emailing a classmate. They will teach families how to log into their Chromebooks, how to log into their learning management system. They're going to stress the importance of pacing in this digital world, and this is very self-paced for these students. They will discuss with families how grades will be assigned. If parents don't currently have an email account, they will help parents set up a free email account so they can have access to VIA DTSOI. And they will also talk to students about the consequences of plagiarism and cheating. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So when they sign up all virtual, I know this is probably even given the answer already, is it for the semester or for the whole year?
So parents are having to commit to the semester.
Just the semester, then we'll decide again then depending on our status.
Right.
And around Christmas.
Yeah, so something that they're trying to do is, up to this point, we've had teachers voluntarily go to VIA DTSOI to teach. So if I'm a teacher from Jones Elementary and I'm teaching at VIA DTSOI and I'm a 4th grade teacher, then they are placing 4th grade Jones students with that 4th grade to be a teacher. That way, if at Christmas, right, we have to send people back into the buildings because people are leaving VIA, then there will be some continuity for those students.
And that Jones teacher goes physically to SOI?
Correct. Correct.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The temperature.
What's that?
The temperature taker.
Yes. I'm wearing many hats. I've always worn several different hats, but now I have a few extra hats too, and so sometimes that means temperature taker, and that's fine, I'm happy to do it. I have three items on your agenda tonight. The first one is a handout list of out-of-district transfers. You will probably notice that there is front and back, which is a bit unusual for the out-of-district transfers. And the reason that it was not provided in your packet this month is that we usually get school board agenda items in on Thursday before the meeting, and on Thursday is when DESI announced that the expectation for all schools in Arkansas was to be open for five days of instruction. You know that Fayetteville had made a different plan, honestly, probably causing a lot of these transfers to come to Springdale. I don't know reasons on the transfers. If they come and say they want to come to us, we say, come on, we don't ask anything else. But we knew there was potential for some fluidity there between Thursday and today. But I will tell you that Joanna Ortiz, who is amazing and processes all the transfers that come through the district, called every Fayetteville family that had expressed that they wanted to come to Fayetteville through this process and made sure that that was what they wanted to do, fully expecting that a lot would say, oh, no, we're going to stay in Fayetteville. One family said, no, we're going to stay in Fayetteville. And in fact, between Thursday and today, we've had additional families express intent to come. So I don't have good scientific data about whether these families chose Springdale for any number of reasons, or whether it was because of the instructional plan offered by Fayetteville, but we're happy to get them. So all that to say, there are a total of 45 students who want to transfer into the Springdale School District. Breakdown by district is 27 from Fayetteville, six from Huntsville, three from Rogers, one from Grabot, three from Prairie Grove, one from Gentry, and two from Elkins. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would ask that you approve these students coming into Springdale.
I'm assuming we don't know what instructional plan that they are going to go with?
No. I mean, we could link that if you wanted to see that, because we do, we have student names, we just give them a number so that we can make that exhibit public.
I was just curious, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I didn't know if they were mainly virtual or face-to-face or what.
I don't know, there's probably a mixture.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make a motion to accept the transfers as presented.
A motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Ramos, to accept the out-of-district transfers as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item is just informational, a report on new hires, both for certified and classified. You'll see the list there. There are 109 certified and 57 classified. I tried to gather some information on what that meant as far as where we are this year in number of staff compared to last year, but unfortunately, we're, it's too fluid right now to be able to give you a good report on that. By next month, we should have settled, and I'll be able to tell you whether we're up staff, down staff, or about even. The same thing with students, we'll have good information on students by next month. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, and then the last item does not have an exhibit, but just some information for you. The beginning of July, when the governor made it clear that his expectation was for schools to be open for in-person instruction, Dr. Cleveland knew that we would have some staff members who were uncomfortable with that option and would want a different option. So he offered every staff member in the district, certified, classified, the opportunity to take a one-year leave of absence. So that leave of absence is unpaid, but it does guarantee the person, when they come back after this year, a position in our district. We had 48 staff members take advantage of that option, 26 are certified and 22 are classified. The people that I spoke to personally, and I talked to quite a few, were very thankful for that opportunity and truly want to be here working, but for whatever reason, couldn't do that or weren't comfortable doing that this year. So you want to have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Cleveland, I have three items for you. This is a thick mask, I hope you can understand me. I have three items for you this evening. The first are the financials for the month of July. On the budgeted amounts, I do have 1920 budgeted numbers because we haven't finalized the budget yet for this year, so I'll be bringing that to you this next month. As we had talked about before, the taxes, because of the delay last spring, our tax collections were heavier than we had in normal in the month of July. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there a motion to accept the July financial statements?
I'll make a motion to accept the July statements.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramos, a second by Mr. Hutchinson, to accept the July financials as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. The second item I have is, it's been two years since we've disclosed the relationship with Bro's Kitchen, or also called The Good Cajun. Mr. Bro is a teacher in the Springdale School System, and he owns a food truck. And on a, you know, if we do business with him, it would be because it's in the best interest of the district to do so, based on bids, but we have to disclose that to the public and ask that you pass a resolution allowing us to do business with him if the conditions warranted.
I make a motion that will pass the resolution allowing the district to do business with Mr. Bro. There's a motion by Mrs. Creek. A second by Mr. Remy. To accept this resolution as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's almost over.
Thank you. And then the final thing is, I'm going to ask Mr. White to come up and talk to us a little bit about getting schools started back from his perspective.
Mr. White.
Hello, Board. Dr. Cleveland. Kelly was wanting me to talk about the return to school preparations that we've done. We've actually started these back in early March, and we started by removing carpet in the hallways and in the commons areas. And by the end of last week, we had finished with 194,080 square feet is how much we've removed, stained, and polished. So in late March, we actually ordered a shipment of the hospital-grade sanitizer, so we'll have it in our warehouse, preparing for this school year. We also, on April 13th, we ordered 30 more atomizers, and then actually, a month later, we ordered 10 more on top of that because the price was going up tremendously. Kathy Laundre and myself met at the end of May, went to several schools, and we moved some of the nursing stations that were really small into different actual classrooms. We've added sinks and medical curtains to be able to separate the sick and well students. So June 5th, we ordered our hand sanitizer and our hand sanitizing stations. Those have been hung in all classrooms. We are still modifying our commons areas depending on the school, letting the administration have some say in where they want them located. Also, on June 5th, we got told we're going to have to disable 648 water fountains. So that's been completed. We've started installing some bottle filling stations. So all the schools will still have access to, to water. On June 7th, some of my team in the cabinet shop started building plexiglass shields.
On the water fountain thing? The water fountains that have the bottle filling capability and the water, can you turn off just the water and have the bottle part going or?
Yes, we did. We had to kind of, you have to take it apart and physically disable.
Re-engineer it?
Mm-hmm. Yep, but it has been done. And, and we'll be able to, you know, when these recommendations are lifted, we can put them back and activate them back fairly easily. We made plexiglass shields for all the office areas where the public will be entering and, and stuff to, to help keep a distance there. So on July 10th, we started the process of adding hot water in all the school buildings. So we had seven elementaries, two junior highs, and then parts of Springdale High didn't have hot water. So we've started that. We're about 80% complete. We, we still have a little more work to do before school starts to, to finish that project up. And we've added hand sanitizing stations in all the buses. And then we've added actual sprayers with disinfecting in all the buses so the drivers can actually disinfect between runs. And then we'll have custodians actually disinfect and wipe down every part of the bus twice a day. They'll do it after the morning run and then they'll do it at night. And the final thing we, we did, we, we met with all the custodial staff. And we've actually moved a third of the night shift over to day shift. So now we're more two-thirds day and a third at night. That will allow us to be able to clean and sanitize more while the kids are there, help with lunches, recess, you know, whatever, whatever's necessary. And, you know, all of the support services team, they know they're going to have to flex depending on the building they're, they're assigned to. And, and we may have to move, shift people around. Once we get our true numbers, you know, we may have to move some people around to accommodate every building's needs. And really, that's, that's my report on the return back to school. On the construction side, DTSOI is in really good shape. We've actually started moving teachers' material and everything into the new part this week. We're going to be moving diesel mechanics probably early next week. And then, I don't, several of you may drive by Harbor. In Springdale, we're getting construction fences put up, job trailers pulled in. So as soon as we finish up on a few permits, those will kick off and we'll get started on those. Do you guys have any questions on any of them?
Do our, do our cafeterias have, I'm just thinking about kids eating in their classrooms. Do our cafeterias have the big carts that, like at a hospital where food trays go in them?
Some of the cafeterias do have the warming trays. Gina's coming up. She has been working with the principals of every building, you know, because some of them will eat in the classrooms and some will still eat in cafeterias and other areas. So each one's different. So we may have warming trays. We actually have to take food to the rooms. I know we do have to cover the food. We can't just take a tray of food and carry it to the room. It has to be covered some, some way.
Okay.
So Gina's working on our options there.
Okay.
You know, and then we're having to add, you know, more trash cans or, I mean, more staff if they're eating in the classrooms because we're going to help get food to them, trash out and everything to, to make that happen in, in the amount of time that they have to eat.
Yeah.
Do you want to make sure they know that we're not in a full, like, drilling or?
Correct. Yeah, at SOI, we, we took possession of areas A, B, C, and D. So there, we still don't have possession of the PAC, the gym, and, and there's a little connecting hall behind the PAC that's still a construction zone. They have construction barriers up that, that will block the kids from getting into the construction area and the construction workers getting into our school. So we're taking over a lot of, of new space. And, and it's really nice. If any of you guys want to go look, just get ahold of me and we'll, we'll go look. You know, there's no hard hats or PPE other than masks required in that area now. And I, I added a few pictures into the packet. It looks a whole lot better in person than on paper.
It looks great.
All right. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's great to be here with you all tonight on our first day back to school. It was refreshing to be back in our buildings with our colleagues to start planning for a new year together. And it was very evident that a great deal of work was done by our administrators to make it possible for us to be back today. And we're all very grateful for that hard work. But the day was very fluid and just seemed to flow seamlessly. So it was evident that it had been very well planned. As we're getting back into the swing of things, SCA will be continuing to offer support for our Springdale teachers. In the next two weeks, we'll be giving away five $100 scholarships for teachers to use to get their classrooms ready and to purchase items that they need for student learning. And we'll be hosting two supply shopping events at our office for Springdale teachers to come shop for free school supplies that they need for their classrooms and for their students as well. And we have a plan to do this throughout the year as needed for our teachers. I have three SCA board members here with me tonight, so I wanted to introduce them to y'all. Loretta Mansell teaches at Bayari and she is our treasurer. Valerie Hannah teaches at Elmdale and she is one of our board members. And Sherry Pianalto is at Southwest Junior High. They all three work super hard to represent our Springdale staff. As we start our new school year together, I went to thank you all again, on behalf of SCA, for all of your hard work and your dedication to our students. We know that this year is going to look and feel different. But it's evident that our administrators have worked hard to make it possible for us. And our teachers are prepared to put in a lot of work over the next two weeks to make it a great year for our students. So thank you all for all that you do for us.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else or are we? Patron comments?
So I just want to say one thing, a couple things. Really unknown circumstances that we're in.
Right. And I, I feel really confident that with the information that you have, the facilities we have, the staff we have, that I, I feel really good that you've done everything possible to get schools started. Two, two words, unknown and fear. And fear is crippling. And I think everybody's fearful. But I think confidence, bold, and, and caring concern for each other and our kids is, is the only way we can go forward. We're doing what our governor's asking us to do. And we, as a board, support what our governor's asking us to do. And we're supporting our district. And we know things are going to happen. I think it's all about how we react and act. And I know we have a great team here. So things are going to happen. The word positive is going to happen. And it's how we react to it. And how we react as a board and, and being supportive and helping our, our families and our team members. So it's all unknown for us, too. So we, we got to move forward. And I just really am super proud of you guys.
Patron comments? If not, then we are adjourned.